I'd like to call the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, August 5, 2021. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Haley, will you please call the roll?
President Ballerain.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Marsha Aska.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Hannan is joining us momentarily, and Trustee Clarity will not be here this evening. Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Also present, Village Clerk Haley, and Village Attorney Molina.
Thank you. President's Report. Tonight I have a couple of Commission appointments. Colin Hughes is Chairperson of the Riverside TV Commission. Term will be Chairperson to expire 2022. Tom Orgler to the Riverside TV Commission to fill the vacancy, term to expire 2024. And Jeff Levine to the Ethics Commission, term to expire 2023. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion to find all three.
Thank you. Mr. Gallegos, second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Aska. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsha Aska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Second thing on my report is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a Class A1 liquor license to Riverside Gas Station and Mini Mart. If I can please have a motion in a second?
Motion made.
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos, second?
Second.
Ms. Aska, Kathy, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsha Aska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Managers' Report?
I just wanted to point out it's an item that's under the consent agenda that as part of the American Rescue Plan Act currently, DCEO is estimating that the Village of Riverside to receive $1,164,090.27, and this would be received in two installments. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you. Resident comments on any non-agenda items? Okay, we move on. Consent agenda. Approved voucher list of bills, August 5, 2021. Approved the Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes, July 15, 2021. Review and File Landscape Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes, June 8, 2021. Review and File Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes, June 23, 2021. Review and File Riverside Historical Commission Meeting Minutes, June 21, 2021. Review and File Riverside TV Commission Meeting Minutes, June 14, 2021. Review and File Community Development and Finance Department, June Monthly Reports. Motion to approve a special event application for the Ames Back to School Assembly featuring the Jesse White tumblers to be held on August 25, 2021. Motion to approve a special events application for the Friends of Riverside Kayak Paddle departing from the Scout Cabin to be held on August 28, 2021. Motion to approve a special event application for Music by the River hosted by the American Legion Post 488 and the Riverside Township Lions Club on September 11, 2021. Motion to approve a special event application for Sunday Family Fun Day at Riverside Foods to be held on September 12, 2021. And an ordinance pertaining to the coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the Village of Riverside. Do any of these items need to be removed?
Joe, could we remove lever "I" please, for discussion?
Sure. We will be removing the motion to approve a special events application for the Friends of Riverside Kayak Paddle departing from Scout Cabin to be held on August 28, 2021. Other than that, is there anything that needs to be removed? If not, I would ask for a motion?
Motion made.
Motion by Mr. Gallegos, second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Aska. Clerk Haley, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsha Aska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Motion carries. Aye, a motion to approve a special event application for the Friends of River Kayak Paddle departing from the Scout Cabin to be held on August 28, 2021. If I can have a motion for this in a second?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Gallegos, second?
I'll second.
By Ms. Aska. Mr. Gallegos.
So we had the first trial run, which happened on the 18th of July. I don't know if any of the board members had a chance to look that over, but in anyone's eyes, I would say it was very successful. I'd like to see that Petalone continue on going back to serve our residents with on-the-water activity, and I would like to have the staff to have the empowerment to approve any future special events that they might have for the rest of the season. I don't see a need for a board to come together and approve it in case we are going to skip a meeting or anything like that, but staff will know if we do have the availability of Scout Cabin, the construction schedule, et cetera. So I'd like for staff to have that capability of approving future special events for Petalone.
Ryan, would you like to add something to that?
We currently coordinate with the village manager and the Director of Public Safety for the events anyway, so we would continue to do that whether it's through the special event application process or through approval.
Okay. Anybody have a problem? Yes, Doug?
I'm guessing I'm taking ordinance to change the ordinance.
Yeah, I'll think about how best to do that, but yes, we can't just sort of say that's fine. We need to look at how the ordinance is set now and create, cut out this particular kind of event for this season, maybe as a pilot or something. I'll figure it out.
Okay.
But if there's consensus to do that. But you're right, Trustee Pollak.
There's consensus to talk about it. I mean, special events is a broad category.
It is.
And certainly if we can expedite those in some way, I'm all for that, but I'd want to hear the pros and cons of that.
Oh, you mean all special events?
Pardon?
You mean all special events?
Yes. Yeah, unless, you know, if this category of special events is different from other types of special events, it's something we would talk about, but I think if we're going to consider that, we should look at all special events and our ordinance regulating special events and modify it as we see.
So if we're doing all special events, I would suggest creating an ordinance where the village manager is empowered to grant a special event license, but has to give notice to the trustees, to the board, and that if any two members of the board or something like that request that it shall be placed on the next agenda or something like that, so that there'd be a way for the board to make it a board issue if a certain number of them respond by a certain date. That might, I think, I'm thinking that's the best way to do it.
What if we added the caveat that if they had a special event the previous year without any issue, and especially if we're starting with 2021 and the fall being the baseline, then if they've had one in 2020 or 2019, previous two years perhaps, and there weren't any issues, that that could be done administratively, but new ones would have to come before the board? Does that sound reasonable?
That could be done that way. It depends on where the board wants to go with it.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Haley, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsha Aska.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
What are we voting on?
And this particular special event license. Not the concept. The concept was just discussion and direction.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Lance. We'll look forward to seeing that. Are there any boards and commission reports? If there is no issues, I know Trustee Hannan wants to be part of the discussion for the registration on inspection and rental properties, so could we move on to the capital plan and come back? There's no?
No objections here.
No objections, okay. So we'll go on to new business, discussion of future capital funding for the park and recreation. Director Johns.
Before you tonight and at your station is a plan for future funding of capital improvements for the Parks and Recreation Department. This is a continuation of our discussion with Water and Sewer to try to get a good 10-year plan that's fully funded with identified funding sources. So we have two plans laid out before you tonight regarding future Parks and Rec expenditures. Table A is pretty much status quo of what we've been doing for the Parks and Rec Department. It includes an annual $3,000 allocation for emergency playground repairs if something is damaged, and then every other year there is a $10,000 allocation for switching out pieces of a park. This does not include any park master plans, any major park redesigns. When we go into Plan B, this starts with a community survey in 2022 that will gauge the community's needs and desires for park facilities, and if those needs are being met by the village or another source. In 2023, there is a comprehensive park facility and program analysis. This would dive into that a lot more based on the feedback of the survey, and are program offerings meeting community needs? Are they meeting the desires of the community? Are they finding it somewhere else? Is there ways for us to partner in some recommendations? And then if the board continues down that path, in 2024, there is a comprehensive park master plan study that is allocated. This would do redesigns for the different parks and playgrounds. So we wanted to put this out there to the board as a discussion point. Plan B also utilizes special rec funds for capital improvements and applying for large-scale grants. In 2025, we put a park master plan for Harrington, just as an example. We assumed that there would be some offsetting grant funds for that, that staff would apply for. However, you can see in the bottom blue line, this plan is not fully funded, so we would have to look into other funding sources, opportunities, and fundraising. But we wanted to gauge the board if they were comfortable moving forward with something status quo like Plan A, or if there were elements of Plan B that they were interested in. I'm sorry, also in Plan B, we put in for poured-in-place or rubberized surface at all the playgrounds to replace the mulch. That is an expenditure that is SRA-eligible, so that levy could offset those projects.
Thank you, Ms. Johns. Just for clarification, the $45,000 SRA funds would be increasing the tax levy?
Correct.
So we would be, what would be the average cost to a $400,000 home?
An average cost to a $400,000 market value would be an increase of $21 annually on the tax bill.
Okay, thank you.
This is a non-capped levy, so it would not require any voter approval to increase.
I have a question about the suggestion that we use rubber surfaces.
I have ten years in charge of hearing over there for the vast time. Just talk a little louder, maybe? I appreciate it.
Okay. Sorry. I had a question about the decision to use rubber surfaces on the playgrounds. I know that that had come up in the context of, you know, crumb rubber and the potential, you know, for carcinogenic transfer to student athletes like in soccer, and so I just didn't know what was exactly being proposed with this.
Director Malchiotti, I'm not quite sure if he has a little bit more information about what the rubberized surface is made from?
The, where the areas of concern in the past were turf fields that they would sprinkle the, it was repurposed tires. It was granular, and that was the biggest issue. What this has proposed, and I could find out, I could dig a little deeper and find out specifics, but as far as I know, there's not those same concerns with this because it's a solidified rubber surface, so it's a poured-in-place. It is somewhat porous, but it's not the crumb or particle rubber.
Yeah, I would like to see more information on that before deciding.
Anyone else have any input? Yes.
I guess are we looking at this more as goals? We're not actually considering budgeting right now for this, obviously.
Right now, what we're discussing is are you comfortable with the status quo in Plan A, or are there options or items in Plan B that you would like staff to further explore and bring to the board?
Because part of it is trying to get a long-term plan for different initiatives that the board has, and then kind of planning for different grants that we might apply to based on the village board's goals and initiatives, and then what items do we need to look for other funding sources, because some of the things just aren't, we are not able to achieve given the revenues that we're receiving.
I guess my response would be I'm interested in pursuing all of these goals, but obviously it depends on what we can afford when the time comes to spend money.
If we decided to raise the SRA, when does that have to be decided in order to get that on the tax?
Before the public hearing on the tax levy, which I believe will be in October this year.
So that's something we need to think about?
Correct.
Quick, earlier revenue, yes. Ms. Evans?
I have some questions about the line items, some of them, the water tower permits for demo and renovation. What will that entail?
Essentially now, we moved our Kinder Kids program and a lot of our early childhood programs there, but it's essentially still a conference room with our old offices behind, so the demo and renovation would open up that wall and open up that side of the building so that we could have more space for the programs.
All right, it's not going to be another conference room?
No.
It's, okay, I was confused. Is that renovation, like, you know? And then Scout Cabin renovations?
That's general renovations to the bathrooms, the wooden floor after so many years needs to be sanded and refinished, basically any interior or exterior repairs.
The planting at Patriots?
We have, we're always supplementing the planting to provide screening for the residents that live there, and sound and privacy and security somewhat for the parks, so that's just a line item to include more plantings on the burn.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like there's already more than we can maintain right now. Don't, don't you, what do you think?
It's challenging.
Yeah. And then I wanted to ask about the ball, the ball field fencing. So, yeah, I know that you've worked with Riverside Little League to maintain the fences. Are those the same fences that would need work? Are we going to replace them?
They would be. We would work with Little League. Little League has mostly done additions. They funded the roof, all of the roof structures at the dugouts. They built batting cages and bullpens, so what this is referring to is the backstops and the fencing, which could be a collaboration between us and Little League, but we have to budget it to take care of that, replace the fabric and maintain the structure and the integrity of it.
So the entire structure would be replaced?
If needed. We have to budget for that, but we would assess if it's just the fabric, if it's the fabric and the posts, based on the wear and tear and the longevity of it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gallegos, do you have anything?
No, not right now.
The rubber surface, I have a couple of questions. The rubber surface, that allows the playground to be more ADA accessible, am I correct?
It does. Wood chips are considered ADA accessible, but this would certainly make it more accessible, more stable of a surface. It is safer in some situations and would certainly reduce maintenance.
Personally, I think we should seriously consider levying the SRA funds to do nothing more than to at least get one of our parks, Turtle Park ADA, you know, ADA approved or easier for our ADA residents to use the park. That seems to be one of the busiest parks. My other question is, I'd like staff to do a little research in the Blythe Park. I think when we did a variance for the school, I think there was a question of the parkland, if that was, if that actually was Riverside or if that was D-96, so I think there was an agreement with that. I think that would be important to know as we get closer to $116,000 expenditure. You know, I think the other thing that we need to know about Parks and Recreation is, you know, they're, they, everything that they do, they fund themselves, other than the tax levy. So when, you know, I see numbers like $817,000 in the hole, I wonder where that, where that kind of money can actually come from. I mean, even grant-wise, that's, that's a, that's a tall order. I wouldn't say, wouldn't say no to money, but all money comes with strings, so we have to be cognizant of the fund balance that they show negative from 2023 all the way to 2031. I don't find that necessarily acceptable, but it's my opinion. Any other questions?
Yeah, one more question.
Shoot.
Is the Blythe Court resurfacing, is that the tennis court?
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, if I could go through my list of questions for direction for staff. Is the board comfortable with Plan A, the status quo, or would they would like to explore Plan B? What I've heard so far is there's elements of Plan B that you would like staff to explore.
Correct. I believe that's the consensus.
The projects presented in Plan B would start with a statistically valid survey of the residents and their needs and desires for improvements to explore if their needs are being met. Would the board be interested in staff meeting with contractors and bringing this before the board for the 20, and including in the 2022 budget?
I would say yes.
Ms. Pollak?
Yeah.
Ms. Aska?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay.
We talked a little bit about the poured-in-place surface versus the mulch. Is the board interested in levying the max rate for special rec levy next year and budgeting for the poured-in-place surface to come back to the board with all the details for Turtle Park?
Ms. Gallegos?
Yes.
Ms. Aska? Considering we find out about the service?
Yeah, I am not comfortable saying yes, we should have a tax levy right now for something that I haven't, you know, seen. Would we use the tax levy for some other purpose if it turned out the material was not acceptable?
I think we can find out about the material well before we decide to.
The tax levy can be used on ADA improvements to any of the parks, so the rubberized surface was one option, but if there is ADA-accessible play apparatus or features, that levy can also be used for those purposes.
Okay.
It can be used for path services in the park to make sure they're at the right slope for ADA. It's pretty general for capital ADA improvements within the parks.
And so we're talking about a $45,000?
Yes.
Tax increase.
Tax increase. $21 per resident.
I would, for that purpose, I think that would be a yes.
Mr. Pollak?
I agree, yeah.
Evans?
Yes.
One question on the ADA. Since we, since we did the rec center and we had to do the, a lot of the ADA because we do West Rover there and things like that, if, for example, there wasn't a project specified in a particular year, could that tax levy go into the repayment of the loan that was taken out from the village for the building of the rec center?
Typically, I've had it approved before the project is completed, because it does need to go to our Special Recreation Association for approval for use of those funds. I would have to investigate that. If the board had wanted to do that before 43 East Quincy was constructed, that would have been definitely an option, so I think so, but I need to look into it further.
All right, thank you.
It can also be rolled into fund balance and saved for a larger project.
Okay, perfect. Good, that's my question. I wanted to make sure that we weren't obligating to spend that $45,000 a year, even if we didn't have a project.
No, we can save it, and it'll sit in the fund balance of that line item.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Johns? Yes, ma'am?
I have two more.
Two more questions?
Sorry.
You have two more questions.
Is the board interested in the idea of a master plan redesign for the parks? We put this in for Harrington as kind of a placeholder to start discussion in 2025. We came up with the figure of $680,000 based on the Candy Cane Park? Is that it, Director Malchiotti?
Yes.
Candy Cane Park in Brookfield, that was a recent park improvement that they did to similar size of Harrington that received OSLAD grant funding. Is the board interested in major redesigns to our parks and playgrounds?
Ms. Evans?
I know the residents are interested in that.
Okay. Ms. Pollak?
So we've, in, in, one of the bullet points, bullet items is park facility program analysis, comprehensive park master plan. It occurs to me that if we want to survey, that should be part of the preparation of the master plan, not before, but it should be, it's typically part of it developing a master plan, where you're master planning capital, facilities, programs, except needs of the community and all that. So I would think that if, and I support doing a master plan, I think we absolutely need to do that.
Okay.
Tremendous number of young families moving in town, and we need to find out what their needs are and try to meet those needs, so we think that the master plan would come, would start, and that survey would be part of that.
Correct.
Well, I would think that the, there should be collaboration between the Parks and Rec Department and the Landscape Advisory Commission on this, given that, you know, Olmstead designed the village and the parks, so it should not be done in isolation just based on, you know, a survey of residents' recreational desires, so there has to be that design input as well. And if that's part of the process, then I would be in favor of that.
We have never had LAC weigh into the parks. I mean, the parks are under the jurisdiction of the Park and Rec Board, they're not under jurisdiction of the LAC or the Olmstead Society. So, I mean, there's, there's no reason why a member from the LAC or a member of the Olmstead Society could be present as we discuss these plans and make their voices known, but that has not been a precedent that we have set in the past. And it's, we've actually carved out those parks.
I believe that the LAC does have a requirement to review changes to the parks in the village code. code. There is a section in there that does require there, if there's any changes to hardscape or landscape within the parks, that they need to take a look at that. It, there is, trust me. You can ask Attorney Malina.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Okay, yeah. So it's, it's in there and I would just like it to be, you know, official in the, you know,
You can.
Planning process, that there's, that it's collaborative, given, you know, given that we are a national landmark.
Bring the clarity on that. That would be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll get clarity for you.
Thank you.
At this large park redesign, it will lead the Parks and Rec Assigned Fund Balance into a deficit. If the board decides to go that way, would the board like staff to present additional funding options that may increase the tax rate or loan money from the general fund?
Yes.
The Sevens, yes? Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Ms. Saskia?
That's so hard. Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. At least we can talk about it. Sure.
Okay.
Are your questions are done?
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to discussion B. I just got a text from Trustee Hannan. He did not make the 7:30 train. So I don't think we'll see him this evening. So if you want to go on with the capital funding for the streets, that would be great.
Absolutely. This is a continuation of the water and sewer plan. All, on the sheet in front of you, all the italicized road improvements are the street portion from the water and sewer, main and sewer replacements. So those are allocated in italics on your plan in front of you. We've also added several other reconstructions and resurfacing of streets and alleys in upcoming years. So I wanted to start with the board to see if there were any projects that they would like reprioritized.
Trustees? Pollak, anything?
I, no, I don't have anything. Looks good to me.
Ms. Saskia?
I will follow staff's recommendation on this.
Okay.
Nothing that's prioritized, no.
I'll follow staff's recommendations.
Karen, any further questions?
Yes. In, sorry, 2024, there is a referendum debt issue, which is a rollover essentially of the 2015 street improvement bonds. Is the board comfortable with that idea?
Trustee Pollak, do you have?
Yeah. So when you say rollover, this is something that would have to go to referendum.
It would have to go to referendum, but the tax rate would stay stable as that's the year the 2015s are rolling off.
It'd be a new referendum asking the voters to let us have that money again, basically.
Yes.
Yeah, I brought this up the last time and, and this is a issue of what's practical versus what's ideal. And we have, Manager Francis had sent me some information that I just briefly looked at, but basically we have borrowed money two or at least twice in this range of $2 million to do street improvements. And each time, its cost is close to half a million dollars in interest, which is another street improvement project. I know the political risk in doing this, but I really think we have to consider asking the voters to make a permanent levy of that same amount that we'll always have for streets because streets is not a one-time capital project. It is an ongoing maintenance that is critical to this village, to any village. So, I mean, I know we don't have to decide that tonight, but I think that's something I would like the trustees to think about. You know, whether we, we go out and just ask for, for, for that permanent increase. Again, everybody's bill would stay the same as it is now, but we would have that money. We wouldn't have to spend half a million dollars in interest every 10 years. We could use that half a million to, to do streets.
My, my question, I, I like that. I think that's, paying interest is always a problem. But if we didn't, if we, if we did do that, could we stay revenue neutral with the tax bill? Would be my first question. And, and if that is true, we would be short the $2 million in 2024 because we wouldn't be able to, I don't think we'd be able to levy enough to get there by, by, in two years. Will that push our, our street improvement or sewer work, or what will that do to the, the timetable that we have? Do you understand, do you see what I'm getting at?
I, I understand. It's, I think that's for staff to answer. I'm sure there's a way that for certain that you could keep it neutral. I mean, that's because you ask for whatever you, you want to keep it neutral, which we would want to do. As far as the timing of a referendum and when the money comes in, I'll defer to staff on that.
What's our debt, debt service payment each year? Sorry, I'm throwing this one out at you. Annually, it probably is listed on that schedule, actually. Be able to tell in a minute and it'll give us a better gauge. Sorry.
Want to look for that schedule. What, what happened if we went to an increase in the tax rate? Those projects in 2024 on the, the bottom half of the schedule would be spread out over time instead of a large, one-year project of almost $2 million. So those would be phased throughout the plan. It would not affect the projects that are currently in the water and sewer schedule. The roads associated with that have enough funding.
So the average debt service payment on, on those particular bonds is approximately $265,000. So, so that's what we would, if, if we tried to keep it the status quo, that would, would be what we would levy?
The goal would be to get to a place where we have a dedicated source of revenue for street improvements. We do the same amount of street improvements every year, so we're not, you know, which is less burdensome on motorists and residents. And we just go around the village, spend the same amount every year. We, we, we keep the, you know, we resurface every 15 to 20 years, every road, and, and that's the goal. So.
I, I, you know, we've done it now twice. So, I mean, every four years, right? Every five years, we're, we're re, four years, we're redoing the bonds. So, I mean, having it in, in perpetuity, we'll, we have streets in perpetuity, so.
Right.
It makes sense. I, my only, my only worry is, and I think you've answered it, is I, I don't want to delay the, the Olmstead watershed project because we can't fix the streets.
It would not delay that project. The projects on the lower half would be reprioritized.
Okay.
If we did go that route with approximately $225,000 from the debt service payment into a voter-approved tax levy increase, that would give us approximately $650,000 annually between non-home rule sales tax, MFT revenue, and that extra levy for roads, which is approximately one street project a year.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Pollak. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Johns, you have questions?
I have more questions.
Okay.
Is the board comfortable with concrete alleys or would they like to, staff to utilize a porous paver, which is approximately 20% cost increase?
Would those be eligible for, for grant funding?
We did submit a grant for Kent Alley through MWRD, and that was denied because MWRD did not feel that it, get, sorry, dancy expert on this question.
Thank you.
When it was denied, MWRD felt it did not remove enough stormwater out of the system to warrant it funding.
Was it for a particular segment of alleys or all the alleys that were contemplated?
Kent.
Okay, just Kent, okay.
The north to Harlem, that section right there.
Would, would it be?
There's already paper, the concrete ribbons. We're going to do the continuation and that portion they didn't think warranted at the time.
Okay. Would, do you think either Selborn or Lincoln would qualify under their? Yeah, okay.
Well, okay, so here's another question. What's the difference in longevity from one to another? Would we get 20% more life using pavers?
Probably. Well, for all intents and purposes, it would be almost a combination. We'd probably do it similar to the ones out there, the concrete ribbon where you drive on and then the second section would be paved. Paved about 50 years, concrete, depending on how it's maintained, about 30 years. Now alleys aren't low traffic, they're, you know, they're not the streets by any means. So that concrete life could probably be pushed a little longer than what it normally would be on the roadway. The reason, you know, those are kind of the direction we're looking for is because some of those alleys have drainage issues. So the concrete can count within the alley and do a certain amount of paper, of course. But we have to get some drainage issues solved every once. So asphalt is necessarily the best option.
I'd, I'd say, given the extended life that the permeable papers allow, plus the fact that they're giving you the benefit of the drainage, I would be in favor of that despite the 20% difference.
As would I.
I did, I was on a, you were on it, the MWRD thing about the alleys. We will try to, I, I'm sorry, I was reading something, but we will try to get grant money for that also from MWRD.
Will submit. Yep. And see what they say. I'll be very sure. You know, maybe their, their rating has changed since, less.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing about the MWRD is if anybody wants rain barrels, you can get on the MWRD website and order them. I think they're $21 apiece and they'll deliver. So I ordered two. They haven't been delivered yet, but I ordered two. So. Ms. Johns?
One last question for you today. MFT funds can be utilized to offset operations or for capital improvements for streets. These capital projects need to follow state guidelines for bidding, which adds cost to the total project. Staff recommends submitting annually for the use of MFT for operations with a corresponding matching transfer from the general fund to streets, to an assigned fund balance in streets. Is the board okay with this procedure moving forward?
Can you say that in English?
It will.
I'm just kidding. I'm just. Okay. Does anybody have any problems with staff's recommendation?
No, that's just, to me, that's a staff move to, to just move the shell pieces around, if you will. And in the end, it's all the same. So if it saves some efficiency.
It'll maximize the dollars for street improvements.
That's what we want to do.
Okay, and there you go.
That sounds good to me.
Are you done, Ms. Johns?
That is the last of my questions.
Great. Lance, could you please clarify us on the parks and rec, please?
Yeah, so thank you to Anne Stradzki, who was doing a little research while I was trying to use the code online without any success. But Section 8, in, in Chapter 8, 8131, dealing with hardscape in public areas, 8 hyphen 13 hyphen 1, A3, states recreational equipment and other hardscape within areas designated as public park and recreation areas pursuant to Section 216.5 of this code are within the jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation Board and are exempt from the permitting requirements of this section that may address the issue that trustee, that President Ballerain was thinking about.
Thank you. Well, we, we move on to our continuing discussion of rental registration inspections. I'm sorry, Mr. Hannan isn't here. But I know that he has spoken with, with Manager Francis and, and several of us. Like, I, I'm hoping we could make sure his, his input is heard. I'm going to allow Manager Francis to go through the criteria and questions.
Thank you, President Ballerain. So if you recall at the last meeting, it was recommended that we, we do a list of questions to get the feedback from the board and then get consensus on those particular questions. And then from there, we would bring back a modified ordinance to the village boards. I'm just going to go through these questions and then with each question, either a head nod or additional discussion, just to make sure there's consensus and we have appropriate guidance. So then we can, Attorney Malina, myself and other village staff can do our work on, on the other end. So for the first item, does the board want a rental registry for single-family homes? So that's, that's the first question.
Yes.
Yes.
No, she hasn't?
Okay, Trustee Pollak says no.
Okay.
I'm sort of in between.
Sorry, okay. Ms. Saskia?
I would be inclined to register all rental properties within the village for the purpose of enhancing communications between the village and those who are engaged in the business of renting property.
Correct. Mr. Gallegos? Sorry.
Fine, sure.
Mr. Pollak?
I just wanted to explain my, my thinking, because it may inform some of the other questions. You know, I, I'm not looking at this as a renter issue, as a renter versus owner occupied. I don't, I think we're on shaky ground if we get into regulating property based on, based on whether it's a renter or an owner. I don't see that there's an inherent quality about renting a property that separates you from being an owner of a property. If I'm renting my home, I don't think the village should treat me differently than they treat someone who owns and lives in their home. I'm viewing this whole program as an issue of multifamily buildings. Now, when, when you live in a multifamily building, unlike a single, detached, single-family home, you are dependent on a whole bunch of people. You're, you're, the other residents in the building and what they do, how they behave. You're dependent on a landlord or a condo owners association and whether they vote to spend money or the landlord spends money to maintain it. And there's a gap there that government can fill. And so that's the way, the way I'm looking at this whole program. And that's why I do not want to get into, I don't want to spread this to single-family residential. I don't think we have a problem there. And our problem that we're trying to address is multifamily buildings and residents who have equal status, whether they're a renter or an owner, residents who need assistance to make sure they're living in a safe building. They need the government to step in, as we do with building code regulations all the time, and address that gap. Make sure, make sure that, that the buildings are safe. That's why I, I feel very strongly that we should leave single-family out of this. I think we, we just go down in a, in a off-target from what we're really trying to accomplish here. And, and it just, I think it, it makes the whole program questionable to me when we, we start including single-family residences. I have no objection to another program where we find out who lives in homes. That's a good, great thing, but it has nothing to do with what we're trying to do here.
Given that argument, I would have to agree with, with Doug. I changed my position on that one. No registry necessary, like we're trying to accomplish here.
Ms. Saskia?
Yeah, I, I do agree with Doug. And I also see a benefit. I agree with Doug and his rationale, but I also see a benefit to the village as far as staff resources if we sort of leave the single-family homes out. There's 90 of them, right?
Yes.
I don't, I don't disagree with trustee. But I, I do wonder from a But I do wonder from a life safety issue or, I mean, we have had issues with single-family homes. I could see, okay, maybe we don't take it to the inspection phase or whatever, but I think it's good to know which houses are renters and who is the owner, because if there is a nuisance problem or some sort of problem, we have the owner on file. And I think, you know, and a minimal registration fee, I mean, you can't sell gelato without a license. These homes are, these are businesses. So I think, you know, a nominal, you know, $25 or $30 fee, just so we have this program up, I think it's good to know from a life safety standpoint who owns the property. And if we have a problem with the property, how do we get a hold of the owner?
We have, so Assistant Village Manager Monroe pulled some data, what we had limitedly, based on some inquiries that we got from trustee Marsh Aska. And so they're very helpful. I mean, when she provided them to me, I thought it was very interesting and it gave some insight to some of the challenges that we've had. So if you wouldn't mind, if she could come up and give, share that information.
Hello, good evening. Okay, so we have a preliminary list that's imperfect at this moment, but on that list identified as about 270 properties that would be considered rental units or rental, rental property. So of those, about 165 or so would be Riverside ownership. So locally managed properties from people in Riverside, they're listed as the owning, as a property owner. Less than 4% are managed from out-of-state addresses. So a handful, probably a dozen or less, are managed by some other state. And then the balance would be from Illinois, elsewhere, either locally or removed. About 160 rentals, if all of those on the list are accurate, or about 60% are two units or less, so just one or two flat kind of properties. Eighty-five are 10 units or less, so about 30%. And then about 6% of our units are 12 or more units, so everything from 12 to over 40. A minimum of 13 property owners hold two or more rental addresses, so they hold more properties. So it's really a handful of owners that have more than one and are managing those multiple properties. As far as complaints and violations, we have common complaints. We ran our system to looking at the last year for what's been happening here. We looked at tall grass and weeds, garbage overflow, construction concerns or unpermitted construction. And so from June 2020 to July 2021, we had 157 property maintenance complaints in those categories. And then we narrowed that down a little bit because it's such a broad range. We narrowed to our busiest months, so the last three months, May, June, July this year, two out of all of the 13 complaints were rentals, three out of 39 in June, and two out of 39 in May, so I'm sorry, I worked backwards there. So it's only about 7.7% of property maintenance complaints specifically are addressed to those properties. But when we look at this from a different kind of step up, we go through our adjudication process. So when we have more serious building violations, we send those cases, you know, you get a courtesy tag reminder. Normally, people correct right away. If it's non-corrected, then they'll be sent to our adjudication process. And so in that, for cases so far in 2021, from January till today's date, there have been 28 complaints. Those encompass seven total property owners. And about 1 and 1/2% of our rental properties go to that level. There are, there were 22, you know, issues at only four properties that have gone to adjudication. And most of those are continuation from the prior year. And then these are likely from non-rental properties. There were six cases at three different properties, and only one of those had more than one citation issued at it. So it just kind of gives you a broad spectrum, a general summary for your consideration and further discussion. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Evans?
So what you are describing are complaint-initiated compliance processes?
Yes.
Right, so it's only complaint-initiated, so it would be like a reactive process?
Yes, unless there is a staff, you know, awareness or observation in conducting other business that we would pass by and identify and issue. These were things that were brought to us by residents in the community.
Right.
Yes, Ms. Pollak?
Just to kind of try to wrap up the question of do we want a rental registry for single-family homes? I don't, I want to be clear, I don't want a rental registry. I'm fine if there's another program that the village wants to utilize to know who lives in houses. But I just don't want a rental registry for single-family homes, because I think that defeats or goes outside of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. You think, you can, Pollak, if you can figure that out. Do you want it for single-family and duplexes? Do you want it to marry what we do with our building and fire? So we start building fire inspections at three flats and above. Would it make sense that this would be, follow that same direction?
I think it does. I think it makes a lot of sense for the rental inspection and registry program to follow that precedent and be for three units or more, any building with three units or more, which answers my answer to the next two bullet points under that question.
Yeah, I can revise my position because I, you know, if we're talking about ease of administration, you know, of a program where you're talking about the registration and inspection eventually of these properties, I think that does make sense to have that cut off.
Thank you, Ms. Aska. Gallegos?
Sam, I already said I.
Ms. Evans?
Yeah, I agree with Doug.
Okay, thank you.
So just to ensure that the consensus is for the rental registry for buildings with three units or more.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
But we do want to have, I don't know.
We want to continue the fire inspections of the common spaces.
But we want to be able to know who our landlords or even owners are, even of single-family and two flats, even though they wouldn't be part of this program. Correct?
Yeah, I think that's worth knowing, but I'd like to pursue that separately.
Under a separate.
Let staff tell us.
Yeah, it was my understanding that we would be treating, for purposes of discussion tonight, the idea of registration separately from the idea of inspection and inspection regime, even though you'd have the same database that would be able to encompass both.
We would probably continue to utilize, I mean, so for the purpose of knowing who the owners are, we have that already in our water billing system, so we already have that information. We only know if the single-family or for the purposes of some of these other buildings, it, we only have the information as it relates to who the water bill is going to and the property owner. Because ultimately in Riverside, the property owner is responsible for the water bill. So we do have that information already.
So most single-family homes, the water bill still goes to the owner of the property?
No, how it works is we'll get permission from the property owner to add somebody onto the water bill. But ultimately, if the bill is delinquent, it will go both to the renter and the property owner. And if someone doesn't pay for it, then the property owner is responsible.
Okay, all right, let's move on? Thank you.
Does the board want to limit the rental registry to multi-family? We've already answered this question, so we can bypass that. Should owner-occupied properties be exempt from the rental registry process?
We pretty much answered that too, because unless an owner owns a three-flat and lived in all three units, right?
Well, in the previous, in the previous iterations of the draft that we were looking at, as long as it was owner-occupied, it, as long as the owner was in the building, it was exempt from the process, whether it was the owner or a family member of the owner. So I guess the question is, regardless, are we just looking at doing a rental registry for buildings with three units or more, regardless of whether the owner lives in the building or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
What frequency does the board want the rental registration to be updated? Are we looking at annually with inspection, which could ultimately be every three years, depending on what the board elects?
I would say it should be updated annually, so we have current contact information.
I agree.
Evans, okay. So I think that pretty much follows what was in here, okay?
Does the board want rental inspections for single-family homes will be the first one?
No.
No, that's already answered, because they're out of the program completely.
And the same thing with multi-family, that's out also.
I just wanted to treat them separately, just in case. Okay, so then it will be consistent with what the rental registry is?
Correct.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Do we want to look at the alternative of the owner certification? This was bought up previously, since we've already removed single-family homes, do we want to allow for any type of owner certification for multi-family buildings?
I think we do. I would be in favor of having something that is distinguished based on whether a property has had violations in the last 12 months. I would say if they have not had violations, they can self-certify. If they have had violations, they have to be subject to inspection. And I would even go so far as to say annual inspection, if they're in that violation category.
For how long?
It would be reviewed annually. So you could, if you were found to have a violation and you were in the self-certification category, the following year, upon reevaluation, you would be put into the category of having to be subject to annual inspection.
For a year, and then you go back to self-reporting?
If you are, if you pass your certification, if you pass your inspection and you're compliant, if you've still had the violation within the last 12 months, I think you need to be subject to that inspection and then be clear for a year.
So to be one cycle?
Yeah.
If you're clear for one cycle, you can go back to self-reporting?
Right, because I think that having a performance-based standard is beneficial in that it rewards property owners that keep and maintain their property.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning the philosophy behind that.
Right.
I just was wondering what you were proposing.
Yeah, that's what I'm proposing.
Mr. Pollak? I want to clarify what we mean by self-reporting or self-registration. What I would want to, I'm okay with that concept if it means that a landlord or a condo association submits a document, which is a report from a licensed home inspector. They, if they want to have their own person do it, I would want a document that's signed and sealed by a state of Illinois licensed home inspector saying they inspected this, 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 that we would be doing anyway. But they want to do it on their own, fine, unless we have a problem and then we go back to what trustee Marsh Aska was saying, where they don't get to do that if we have a problem, they have violations. But I don't want it to be just, the landlord can write a letter saying, oh, we're okay. What does that do? I mean, you know. Is, when you were talking last meeting about self-reporting, is that what you had in mind?
I believe that's what was. I'm sorry, Doug, no, that's not what was, what you're saying is you would still have. Well, I have two questions, if I could. Are you saying this for all units three and above, or just three to six, or three to 10?
I'd say all units three or above.
So any, any, any building, three and above, if they want, how do, let's say a multi-family unit of 50 units, what would we, or say 60 units? We would, we would have them give us that registration with that, every, 20 units every year? Is that what you're saying? Because that's what we.
Or once every three years. It doesn't have to be divided up, but, I mean, each unit, we're getting ahead to the other questions now, but I think we talked about that every multi-family unit would be inspected once every three years, correct?
20% of every unit.
But, so, I mean, that's beside the point here, but. So my idea would be that your building, Mr. Landlord, your building, you know, you can hire your own inspector that's licensed and do your own inspection, if you prefer that.
How do we handle the fees?
Well, we charge a fee for it. I mean, the fee would be minimal, and that would save us money. I don't think too many people would take advantage of it, because it'd probably cost them more to hire that. But if they have tenants who are concerned about privacy or whatever, that's fine. You know, just have a licensed home inspector do that inspection and submit the report to us. And then, you know, we know that it's, we have a credible source of information indicating that the building is in compliance. I would, I would like to see that as an option for landlords or condo associations.
I don't want to put words in trustee Hannan's mouth, but I, my understanding of what we were considering with self-certification was that it would be a certification that the property met, you know, these safety standards, just basically filled out by the landlord and signed under penalty of perjury. I think there was a reference to that standard, rather than a full-scale, you know, inspection of each individual unit within the building, you know, by a licensed inspector. I just wanted to clarify what my understanding was.
I think your understanding is correct, but I also think Mr. Hannan, again, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, would much rather have what Doug is proposing than what that would be in proposal, because he was not totally in favor of self-inspection. He was more in favor of actual inspecting, so I think he would be more in favor. I'm sorry, Ed, if I'm speaking for you, but, Ms. Evans?
Yeah, well, that was my understanding as well about trustee Hannan. But unfortunately, he's not here, and I'm not going to speak for him. So the reason I don't, I wouldn't favor a system where we look at their history over the past year is because that would be, again, a reactive process and not a proactive process where we actually go and look ourselves. So if we're going to wait for people to complain, we know that that doesn't always work. So I wouldn't be in favor of a strategy where we look at their history, like, over the past year, and if they have no complaints, then they're off the hook.
Okay, I think we have two questions here. One is, one, I think, let's just, is Doug's idea of owner certification by a qualified inspector, does that carry weight with everybody? Does that, does anybody have a problem with that?
Yeah, that's fine. Either the owner gets an inspection, and is it an inspection of all the units in the building?
I would, I would just think that the, well, he would have to do it in the same, well, if he wanted to do all, I guess he could do all.
Or 20%?
But I think it's 20%.
No, no less than 20.
Minimum 20%, but at the end of three years, it has to be 100%.
But from the perspective of the ordinance, back to what trustee Collins had said when she was on the board, is you want to make sure that over that three-year period, that you're, you're trying to hit that same building once a year, so, and how you distribute the inspections, which I think is a great. So, and how you distribute the inspections, which I, I think is a great idea. It becomes a little bit more management piece, but I think, you know, something may be fine one year, but, you know, in another unit the following year, there could be a deficiency that is found.
And I personally think that most landlords would probably do this if we're, that we're smaller landlords, three flats or six flats, and probably coordinate their inspections with moving in or moving out of the tenants. So I, as long as they, as long as they follow the minimum of 20 and, and got to all 100% in three years, I, I think that would be acceptable, and I think that, I think.
Yeah, I just have a bit of a concern in that we have heard from some of our folks who are landlords here that they are intending to pass the cost of inspection on to their tenants. And, you know, my thought was, with a performance-based system that gives some sort of a benefit to those landlords that do maintain their property, that are good landlords, you're not raising the cost of living across the board for your entire tenant population. So by having a list that distinguishes and requires inspection of properties that have had violation, yes, you know, they're going to pass those inspection costs on to their tenants. But then you have your good landlords who haven't done that, that if they're allowed to self-certify, they don't have to pass those, they don't have any cost to pass along to their tenants. That is the fault of the village, you know?
I'm thinking out loud, and this is somewhat of a rhetorical question, but would you consider a landlord who sent the village a letter stating that his units were all in compliance and did not do an inspection, would you consider that to be a good landlord? I wouldn't. So we're not asking, I mean, you know, self-certifying, based on what? Based on, you know, they don't want to mess with it? I mean, how would the landlord write that letter without an inspection?
I think we would provide a form.
I think we all agree with what you're saying, Doug. I think, I think we're that. I think, I think what we're, Trustee Osgood is, is getting is, should we have a, a, a good landlord list? Where, so everybody in the first three years would actually follow the program. It's the next three years. And if, you know, over the first three years, you know, you have your three flat and you fill your applications and, and everything comes well, and you have no violations, you have no rental problems, you have no nothing, the next year, you wouldn't, you would be, not have to go through that again. You know, I, I think that's kind of where you're coming from, the way.
It is, and there's another reason that I like a performance-based system, is that you can start it right away, because you have the data on who's had violations and who hasn't already in the last 12 months. Under the draft that we were looking at last month, it would have taken three years to establish whether all landlords in the village, you know, were going to achieve this, you know, status where they had a certificate of, oh, what did you call it? A certificate of.
Whatever.
Certification, or whatever, that, that they had to have passed an inspection in order to be able to rent property. That's what the prior draft contained.
So you.
So you would have to take three years for those landlords to all 100% be able to rent their properties under that system, because you couldn't get 100% of the properties inspected. Prior to 2022.
I don't think that's what, I don't think that's what the, I think, I don't think the ordinance precludes somebody from renting the properties. I just think it, it, I, I, I don't have problems with, with what you're, what you're proposing, but I, I would think we want to at least get into those properties or have, or have inspections of those properties done at least once to, to the first, you know, the first three years, we would actually, that's my.
Yeah, but it was Section E, which talked about this issuance of a certificate for a rental certificate of compliance, which would be required for each dwelling, starting in January of 2022. It would be unlawful to lease or allow occupancy of any dwelling rental unit in their building unless they had both registered and had an inspection showing that they were in compliance. So I, I just don't see that it's feasible to have, you know, all, what is it? 200, how many, how many properties do we have here? 270 total? Or, you know, if you're talking about just the, the numbers that are now over three units.
So this doesn't deal with whether you're going to have a performance base, but the ordinance does address that situation. If you go down a couple of sections, it has, it talks about interim occupancy. Interim occupancy following the initial effective date. Following the effective date of this section, any owner of a rental building unit may continue to permit the occupancy of the dwelling by the current tenant until the code official has conducted an inspection of the dwelling. So no one's illegal. And then in that, if you haven't had an inspection yet, but your tenant moved out, then you, you would need to have it inspected at that point, in order to technically be able to rent to a new tenant. But everyone would be fine initially. But that's, that doesn't deal with the wisdom of a performance-based thing. But the ordinance covers the situation. What I was going to suggest is a way to bridge the gap between what Trustee Pollak was talking about, was all you would have was, and a landlord send in a letter saying everything's fine, is I'd suggest that if you were going to consider having individual landlords who are legally responsible for their properties be able to self-certify without paying for a full home inspection, the way to do it would be to have a home inspector create a list, and then the, the certification would have to certify that the legally responsible person went through each room of the unit and certified that they looked at the following things and certified that they are in working order. You know, smoke detectors, sockets, all outlets work, all outlets have cover, plate covers on them that are not cracked. All windows, there are no cracked windows. You can get a list from a home inspector, you know, or have someone who does this kind of thing. And then, they, they wouldn't be licensed, but if they, they would have to be really, it would make them consider before they sign something like that, if it had some detail in it. That would, might be one way to bridge that.
But would that be available to all? I would, I would not think that we'd want to have that available to all. I mean, I could see that for three to six.
Well, not, yeah, that's, that's up to you. I'm just saying that if you, if you wanted to try to go in some direction where for, for well-performing or where you don't have any problems with the landlord, you allow self-certifying, it, it would allow them to do that with some level of detail that would show by signing it, they're representing, they actually look for these things and saying they are working, they checked them. They, you know, they checked the smoke detector, they checked each outlet.
I, I think that's a great.
So that was, would be one thought.
Yeah, thank you.
Trustee Pollak?
I, I didn't understand that self-reporting would only be after you had an initial village approval. Given that, and with the idea of trying to reach consensus and get everybody comfortable with this, I, I could go along with that, that type of program, I think. And, and, you know, we need to remember, we can always revisit this if something doesn't work. And most likely, something won't, won't work, and we'll have to come back and talk about it some more. That's the nature of these things.
Okay, just to be clear, are we saying that this could be done for three flats and, to six flats, or three flats and all?
I think we need to say all. I mean, I think we need to be, treat everyone equally.
Okay, so just to be clear, self-certification would be allowed after the first three years of the program, given they had no violation or issues listed, and then we would come up with a list or some sort of sign-off by the owner?
After three years?
After three years.
The first.
Or, or an inspection of 100%, right? If they, if they get inspected.
Each year, you'd have to inspect at least 20% of a building, so presumably it'll take the three years.
Say, after three years, or upon, you know, a full, after all units had been initially inspected.
Okay.
Everybody comfortable with that, and Sevens?
Yes, so they can self-certify after three years of inspection.
We will get in every unit at least once.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good, that's fair.
I do have a question. What are, exactly are we asking them to inspect and certify when they hire inspections?
We'll have a list. I mean, there, there's a list of, for CO2. I think the common things are, you know, CO2, fire extingu, or fire alarms, GFIs in the bathroom and the kitchen, working windows, you know, so they don't, you know, so you can get out.
I mean, that's the same thing that inspect, they look for certain things and not others. Peeling paint, you know, breaches in drywall or things like that. Water, if there, looks like there's water damage, leaking fixtures.
Rotting wood.
Toilets flush.
Lead paint, mold, that sort of stuff?
What?
Lead paint and mold?
Well, they won't test.
Look for mold, I don't know if they would do lead paint tests in buildings.
No, if the paint is flaking, they'll note it.
I mean, lead, lead paint hasn't been sold since the 70s. You'd have to have pretty old, I, I don't know if they do, they might do testing if they saw some really old paint, but I don't know if they do that.
I don't know that we've, we've done that. We, we will note on inspection reports if there's flaking paints or that something needs to be painted.
Okay.
So we, we, I think we have a consensus there, that we're going to go through every unit in three years, and after that, we would allow self-certification with a checklist for any landlord that has no violations.
So that leads me into my next question. So we're, we'll allow the owner certification, but what are we looking for the frequency for this to occur? Every, every 12 months, the owner certification? Even if they're only going to have an inspection potentially once every three years? So are we looking at it annually, I guess is the first question, or do we want to revert back to the every three years?
Yeah, I think annual self-certification that they submit with their registration.
And I would assume that if a, if a landlord is, um, avail, I don't know, um, help me. Sounds like.
Sounds like.
If, if, if this is, if this is available to him, if this program of self-certification is available to him, the, the, the fees of a self-certificated landlord would be less than a non-self-certificated landlord, because we're not doing the inspections, am I correct?
If that's what the board elects, we can definitely work those numbers as it relates to how much it'll just cost administratively to process that, do the mailings, and.
Okay, thank you.
Is that what the board wants?
I think you need to restate that again.
Okay, so the first one is, is there consensus on doing the self-certification annually for those that qualify?
Yes.
After three years.
After the first three years.
Correct.
But I, I do have a question, going back to that, about what if a property owner cannot get 100% of their units to authorize an inspection loaded? They refuse, because they are legally entitled to refuse, you know, an inspection like that.
I would turn that over to Mr. Molina.
Who's entitled to refuse?
The tenants are entitled to refuse.
Yes, the tenants, yes.
Yes.
But the owner then would need to intervene or be in violation after a certain period, because all leases have reasonable, reasonable access by the landlord. And if the tenant isn't giving reasonable access, because the village wants to do an inspection so the landlord can get, you know, certified to rent the property, the landlord's going to have to take action. And they could be brought up in administrative adjudication if we can't get in. So it would have to be dealt with that way. Or, you know, I would think, in, in my experience, because I work in communities that have these programs, it's extremely rare for a tenant to not want the village to come through as part of the inspection program. It's usually because it's a tenant that has maybe a hoarding issue, or a mental health issue, or, or is just somewhat eccentric. And in those cases, you know, the village can just deal with it on a one-off. I mean, if it's a situation where you think the landlord is not working behind the scenes to try to keep us out, and every other unit is getting inspected, without any basis to be concerned about what's in there, because you, you don't have a report from a family member or a neighbor about awful smells in there, you might just give that, give that one a pass, you know, as far as using our discretion on enforcement. But you, you could either, you know, if a tenant refuses access, you can say the landlord's responsible for that, because somehow we have to be able to get in there. We could go get a court order to go in there, but, you know, we probably wouldn't want to go to that effort if we have no reason to believe there's something bad in there, and we think the tenant just is standing on principle, or whatever it is, and deal with that on a case-by-case basis. So that's how you would deal with it.
Are you comfortable? Getting comfortable?
I just think it could be, as long as the, I guess, it's not the village's responsibility to force inspection on the tenants, but rather it is the landlord's responsibility to work with their tenants to allow access, then that is acceptable. Because I, I don't want a situation where the village, you know, is sending them a notice of inspection and saying, "You have to be present here to let us in," and, you know, I mean, it just.
No, I mean, typically, the, the first notice would go to the landlord. "We were on-site to try to do our annual inspections. We had given you the dates, so you assumed the landlord is the one that's going to be, hey, the village is coming through. They're the ones that interact with the tenant, not us." And that if you have a tenant that says, "Oh, I'm sorry, you can't come in," and it might be for a very commonsensory, they're just not ready at that point. They say, "Can you come back another time?" And that, you know, that's fine. But if you can't get in, and you don't know why, and you don't have another date, I think you, you send a note to the landlord saying, "We didn't get into these three units. We're going to need alternate dates. Please let us know when the, your tenants will let us in." And that's how it goes, until we reach a point where, you know, we think we're getting full cooperation from the owner, and there's a specific problem with a tenant, and we think everyone's working in good faith. And we would do it the way the village enforces anything. Use discretion, given the circumstances of each unusual situation.
Okay.
But we'd always be dealing, the village would always be dealing directly with the owner, and not trying to say the tenant is somehow responsible for getting the owner's license. It's not the case.
Okay, I, I know this is in the weeds a little bit. I apologize, I don't mean to be getting in the weeds. But number three, notices of inspection, the official, official shall provide at least seven days' notice of inspection to the owner by regular mail. I think seven days by our regular mail is really 14 days or 30 days. I just, I don't, unless they're hand, I think, I think a tenant should be given at least a five-day notice, and a landlord with, you know, with at least 14 days. I'm, I'm, that's my thought. I mean, it's just, I just think it's a little. Oh, seven days, I guess.
Oh, oh, well, I thought you said it should be seven.
No, I think, I think seven is.
It's really three.
I think seven is three with our post office. So I think that should be, that should be increased to 14, and we should specify a minimum number of days that the landlord should at lea, I mean, we, he shouldn't tell the, the tenant, "They're coming tomorrow." There, you know, he should at least give them five days' notice, even buy a hang tag on the door. I've seen some, some villages that just do a hang tag, say, "Your unit's in for inspection on Friday, January 6th." That's just the weeds, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. And just for fair, further clarification, just from our time management piece, we would, and I'm, I'm comfortable with it saying, whether it's 14 or 21 days, because we're going to be scheduling these types of inspections, coordinating with our contractor during our less busy times with building and community development. So it would be during the cooler months, because that's when they'll, they'll be available to go ahead and take care of these in an efficient manner. So we'll know, as we look at our schedule, looking out, because we'll want to make sure that we give it to our contractual inspector well in advance.
Okay, I think we're doing well.
We are. There's one item that, the mentioning of, with the self-certification, looking at a reduced fee, we kind of jumped back on, backwards a little bit on it. So I just wanted to confirm that there is consensus about us evaluating the reduced fee and coming back with a recommendation to the board?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
What fee would be reduced?
The, the inspection fee, because we wouldn't actually be making the inspection. The, the inspection fee because we wouldn't actually be making the inspection.
So I, I think this goes further to now what Trustee Evans is thinking. So we would have an annual registration and we have an inspection fee. So we would have to devise a regis-, uh, renewal registration slash self-certification fee?
Right, of some, of some carrot.
Okay. So it would be less than the 55 when you take it over the, 55 or the 115 when you take it over the three years? So we'll, we'll work to put something together to, for the board if you're...
So even if they self-certify, they have to pay the fee, $55?
No, that's, that's...
No, they should.
They would pay a reduced fee. They would pay a reduced fee, basically a, a administration fee.
Oh, that's the only reduced fee we're talking about is if they self-certify?
Yes.
Okay.
Something de minimis that is not...
Okay. Thank you.
Move on.
It seems as though, but I want to confirm, what frequency will the building be inspected? I, seems as though it's every three years, but I just want to confirm.
A minimum of 20%. I think basically what the ordinance says, right?
But I think if you're a, if you're a violator and you haven't approved and you keep getting violations, you need to be inspected annually.
Yeah, or until the issue's been resolved.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two things that are happening. One is our, it's going to be our regular process of inspection. And then it's going to be like a whole separate issue for managing violations.
And re-inspection, correct?
Right.
There would be a fee for re-inspection. So are we looking at, you're saying that until the inspect, the issue is rectified, but that it would keep getting re-inspected until the issue is rectified? So are you comfortable with saying the three year, they would be inspected every three years? And per kind of what was outlined before? If there's an issue, there would be a re-inspection with the re-inspection cost until those issues are rectified? So it could be that one building has to be re-inspected four or five times until it's rectified? But they would continue in their three-year cycle? So it may take them two years to rectify it and then they may be back at being on their regular inspection cycle? Does that make sense?
I think they have to be clear for an entire year before they can be on the self-certification list. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that they would, they wouldn't be eligible for self-certification, but they wouldn't have to necessarily go through an inspection of every unit every year. They would remain on that three-year village inspection cycle until they were clear for a year and then they could self-certify.
Right. But if they had an issue in like one unit, that would get re-inspected until tho- those issue, issue or issues are resolved?
So I'm a little unclear. I thought the three-years period that we were talking about was just for the first three years that the ordinance was in effect? So that at the end of that three years, you're either having people on the self-certification list or on the annual inspection list?
No, because then you'd have to, you'd have to annually inspect every single unit if unless you were self-certifying. And I don't think that, no one ever suggested that. I think the, the three-year cycle is just how long it takes to get through all the units. So it would keep cycling unless you were a landlord that was eligible to self-certify your, your units in that building because you've, you've never had a problem. And then, then you could self-certify and not have any inspections by the village unless you had a problem. Then you'd have to be inspected to fix that problem because you'd, you'd get written up. The village would send you a list, "You have so many days to do that or we're going to have to issue a citation." They have to come back to re-inspect. They pay an administrative fee to re-inspect. Let's say they take care of it. Then they took care of that and we won't file an administrative adjudication because they took care of it. However, that following year, they're not eligible to self-certify. And then they would have to go, would they have to maybe go through a three-year cycle until they, all of them have been inspected and then they can self-certify?
So you could have...
You know, that's where you have to decide.
Because we have to do 20, if we're going to stick to the, at a minimum, 20% per year during the, the three-year cycle, we're going to be hitting that building every year. And so they'll do the self-certification.
That's, that's what I, yeah. I mean, my concept was that if you're in violation, you should be inspected annually.
Yeah, so...
And the building would be, but not necessarily every single unit.
Unit. Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to be clear, there's consensus on it being every three years that the entire building itself would be completely inspected? So it would go through a three-year cycle?
Remembering that we are doing, at least right now, fire inspections in all of these units once a year.
Correct.
In all these buildings.
In the common areas.
All the common areas. And we can add to that common area too. If I remember correctly, if we wanted to add mechanicals in basements, we can do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So we are getting into the buildings, common areas every three years, even of...
Every year.
Every year, even of, of good and badly. Okay?
Okay. So every three years. Three years is going to be our cycle. Will each unit in the building be inspected over the specified time? We've already answered that. Should owner-occupied properties be exempt from the inspection process? We've already answered that. So thank you for that. Would the board like annual building and fire inspection in common and mechanical spaces in all multifamily buildings? This was brought up at the last meeting. If we're saying all multifamily buildings, this would include not only rentals, but condo buildings, which many of them are owner-occupied?
Yes. Evans, yes? Ms. Oscar?
Yeah, we're working on a, it's like a multi-unit building policy, so that would fall under the policy.
Correct. But we wouldn't be able to ever get into a condo.
We wouldn't go into individual owner-occupied condo units.
But we can get into the...
But you wouldn't under your policy anyway because you're exempting, you've got to be three or more.
Correct.
Just the hallways and...
Yes.
And mechanical.
Well, I, I want some clarification on that because what I said at the beginning was that I wanted this program to address multifamily buildings, period. Now, are you saying now that we can't do this with condos?
Well, it depends on what you mean by can't do what?
The inspections, the same thing we've been talking about all evening.
Oh, okay. So you're saying if there's a condo building, saying that in order to, 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 to regis- you'd have to register, owners of condos would have to register? That mean, they're like, they're not tenants?
Well, they, they have a property owners association that would do that. Um, I guess my point is that, you know, the, the whole issue here, as I said before, is not rental. It's multifamily buildings where people, residents are dependent on either their landlord or their property owners association and their neighbors for safety. And we need to fill that gap. I don't see a difference between whether it's rental or condos. Um, the, I mean, we have seen, you know, history shows that condos are susceptible to lack of maintenance as, as can be, as, as rental buildings can be. And those people...
Yeah, I, I mean, I, so I've seen, I've seen attempts to try to call for inspections of owner-occupied units. It's been discussed. I've never seen it actually tried. Where you'd be, you're saying that if you own a condo, you have to register your condo with the village and be inspected?
Well, I would assume that the property association would do that.
Well, but they don't, they don't really work the same way as a landlord does. They're only responsible for the common areas.
Well, we don't need to, I mean, if, if, if you, I, I would just ask that you look into that and let us know.
Yeah, it's a thorny, that's a thorny issue.
Right. If we can't do it, fine, we can't do it. But I just want to make the point that, you know, condo buildings, you know, a lot of, not necessarily in Riverside, I've, I've not known of any issues with condo buildings in Riverside. But we've seen throughout the country where condo buildings, where homeowners, property owners associations defer maintenance because they don't want to spend the money and they want, you know, the next, the next generation can, can take care of that. And all of a sudden, the buildings are, are a danger.
But those are...
But those are common areas.
Those are common areas. Those would be caught by our building inspector, fire inspector in the common areas.
Yeah, if you have, if you have deteriorating common areas, you can cite an association because that's their responsibility. Uh, what I was talking about was saying that, you know, each unit of a condo building, whether or not it's owner-occupied or not, has to be inspected under this registration ordinance. That's where, that's where it gets thorny.
Well, I'd like to know if, if that's something we can do because in theory, there's no difference as a practical matter. I mean, if you own a condo and you have exposed wiring or whatever and your unit catches on fire, well, guess what? People, other people who have no ability to regulate that are in trouble.
Yeah, I will look at it.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Anybody else? Can we move on? Okay.
Certainly. So just to confirm that currently at a minimum, we're saying yes to adding the inspector, building inspector to our annual fire inspections and we'll have to come back with that code modification.
Can I, can I get to add one caveat? If, let's say a unit, a building, is in the self-certification for their, their units, but their annual building and fire inspection comes up with serious code violations, do they lose that ability to self-certify?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Evans, anything?
That's fine.
Good. Okay. Skalos?
Yes.
All right. Move on. Thank you.
Okay. So I don't know that me going through these additional questions are necessary because it seems like we've created the framework. This talks about a tiered approach to the registration and inspection process. Um, but I think we've kind of hit, these were alternatives or other ideas that board members had sent to me. Um, but one item, because it, one talks about the single family and two flats being allowed to self-certify. We've kind of vetted that. Um, we've vetted the annual building and fire inspections and that it would be for... Okay, so here is a very good question. Um, we're doing them for just the three units or more per what is required for the fire inspections, for the common and mechanical areas. So that's what we're going to stay consistent with, correct? Um, should property owners with violations pay a penalty as part of the registration or inspection fee? They're going to have to pay a re-inspection fee when we have to come out, but do you want staff to establish a, a penalty?
Only if it's gonna, if we need it to cover the extra resources it takes to manage it. Otherwise, I would say no.
Yeah, it definitely has to be tied to what our costs are, you know, for their special costs, that having this type of a problem property.
Keep in mind too that if, if someone hasn't inspected, hasn't corrected it quickly enough, we'll have cited them. And so I think if, we can take the policy position that if we're forced to cite somebody, once we get compliance, we're still going to need a fine of some kind and that would be their penalty. If the, if the, if we don't have to file anything, it means they've corrected it right away. And so I think that may be enough.
Are, are we within our rights to put in something about recovery of court costs or something that becomes necessary for enforcement?
We, we can look at that. I mean, in administrative adjudication, it's really hard to say what actual court costs are because it's a, it's a cattle call. You know, it's not like you have to draft a complaint. It's not like you have a special status hearing for your case. The prosecutor's there, the ALJ is there for a whole bunch of cases and we'll just be one of that, that group.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So we are not going to look at the penalty because that'll be covered as part of our administrative adjudication process.
What if we, what if a, I don't know if this is even a, an issue, but what happens if a, an owner of a three flat doesn't register?
That's my next question.
It's a violation of the code.
Okay. So we have a penalty for that?
Yeah. Was that a yes for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well...
It'd be treated the same way. They would get a warning letter, "You haven't registered. You're late." We can, we're forced to take action. We can cite you. We can take you to court. And then if we have to, we'll cite.
We'd go to the adjudicator, right?
Yeah, first, that's always the first step because it's inexpensive and, you know, just to get there usually, usually does the job.
Well, for, before it hits the adjudication piece for their, just their registration, um, let's say we have to send them a notice. We have to send them a follow-up notice. That, that's the, the penalty that I was referring to as part of that. So are we comfortable with there being an assessed penalty based on the administration of that?
It would be a late fee maybe, right?
That's why I just want to confirm that we're...
A late fee, sure.
Okay.
Good. Are we, are there any questions?
Almost. Would the board like staff to create a landlord-tenant information sheet and a program to enhance communication with renters?
Yes.
Okay. Does the board have a preference on how many staff members should do the onsite visit? Um, should it be the inspector, inspector and a community service officer, inspector and the fire inspector? And if, if we want more than just the inspector, then we'll need to look to adjust the fee slightly to recover those costs of that additional staff member?
Yeah. I think my feeling would, that's a staff, staff, that's a staff directive. If they feel they need a CSO, then they can, they can do that. If they feel they need something that's, I mean, that should, I mean, I think that's...
Maybe, maybe we can put something out with our communications, either on the webpage or to the landlords to say, "If you feel you would like to have a community service officer present for purposes of the inspection, please contact the village office."
Okay. We can make that, make that staff through. Okay. That's perfect.
All right. That is all I have. Thank you very much.
I think we made sausage.
Thank you.
Can we just have, can I just have one clarification, please?
Yes, Ms. Evans.
So, um, I'm talking about the very beginning of the first three years. So if a multi-unit building decides to self-certify, that means, with a checklist, that means they have to have their own inspector come, right?
In the first three years.
Right. Okay. And it's, it's called self-certification, but really they're just contracting their own...
Correct. For the, yeah, it has to be the first three. Only, yeah. After that, they can self-certify on their own checklist. They are in good standing.
In good standing.
Right. And if they're not eligible for that, after that, we want to do it.
Then we will do it. Yeah, that's actually a very good point. Yes. Okay.
What did you, sorry, if you repeat that?
That my understanding of what the consensus was that the option to do a formal inspection with one's own contractor of choice would be only for the first inspection. After that, I mean, they could do it if they wanted to. They could do it anytime, but we would only require a self-certification by the legally responsible individual, the owner, after that. But if they lost that qualification due to a violation, until they were re-eligible to self-certify themselves, the three-year inspection cycle would only be done with village staff. We wouldn't allow that home inspection if they were a violator after the first three years.
All right. So they can't just take the sheet and mark the checklist with no professional oversight?
Not in the first three years.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct?
Correct. That was the consensus.
Okay. I think we, any other questions? I think we did a great job building consensus around a very difficult ordinance. Um, and I think it's, at the end of the day, um, the patience and frustrations that have kind of come out over the past couple of months is worked. So, does anybody in the audience like to address anything about the ordinance that we are considering or have any input? Okay. Trustee reports and communications. Anyone?
Oh, I have a couple of things.
Trustee, let's go.
Yes, here we go. Hold on just a second. Um, a couple of weeks ago, in July, I attended a, oops, not recognizing my face ID for me to pull up my notes.
Aberdeen, if you could speak up just a little bit. I'm having a hard time here.
Oh, sorry about that. Oh, sorry about that. Okay, so a couple of weeks ago, I attended a seminar that was sponsored by the Chicago Metropolitan Council of Mayors on the Chicago Regional Climate Action Plan, which has been unveiled. And this is for our region. It has two main goals. One was to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and the second is to create resilient communities that can easily adapt to the effects of climate change. So, just so the, you know, community is aware, although a zero emissions goal for carbon has been articulated for 2050, our region is attempting to reduce carbon emissions by 50% from 2005 levels by the year of 2030, which is just nine years from now. So there are a number of things that we can do. I know we already, as a village, have been committed to sustainability and sustainable practices, but there are some terrific resources through the mayor's caucus. They have a framework called the Greenest Region Compact that has a, a number of ideas for us. So I look forward to exploring those with the board over the next, you know, few years. A second thing that I would like to report on is that I attended the Riverside Farmers' Market this past Wednesday on behalf of the village board at the Ask a Trustee table, and I had very nice interactions with about a dozen people, in-depth conversations, residents concerned about different issues within our community. It was a great experience, and the feedback was, "Yes, trustees, you should come back and do this again, so, you know, we can hear more from you." So that was exciting. Then my third thing that I would like to report on is that the Frederick Law Olmsted Society will, in August, be doing another seed hunt, Sunday, August 15th, at noon. This one will be taking off from Indian Gardens and feature as the guest nature guide, Val Keho, who is a naturalist and certified arborist with the University of Illinois Extension Center, serving Cook County. She does the master naturalist and the conservation-at-home programs, so she's going to be a fantastic educational resource as we go tromping through Indian Gardens in search of new seeds for our botanical box that we will be gifting to the library on Olmsted's 200th birthday next year. So those are my items of community interest.
Thank you, Ms. Ozga, and thank you for doing, being the ambassador to the Farmers' Market the other day. I appreciate that. Ms. Evans? Galagos?
If you noticed, the board has been wearing their masks again, even though I'm very, very proud of Riverside with our vaccination rate. We had five cases last week, and the Delta variant has come home. So I just, you know, I ask you to, if you're not vaccinated and you're of the age to be able to be vaccinated, I would ask you, please, to consider that. If you are vaccinated, I would, I would ask you to please think about wearing your masks when you're in public, because we, we do know, science tells us that we can be carriers, even though we may be asymptomatic, and the life you save may be that of your neighbor's son or daughter. So please be conscious. Thank you. The board has a need for an executive session tonight to discuss appointments, employment, compensation, disciplined performance, or dismissal of specific employees, to discuss setting price for sale of lease of village property, and to discuss the acquisition of lease or real estate for use for the public building. No final action will be taken in the executive session, and the board will not reconvene. So if I can please have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session.
Motion made.
Most, thank you. Trustee Galagos may have a second.
I'll second.
Trustee Ozga, Kathy Haley, will you please call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.